Okay, at 6:30 I'm gonna call this meeting to order. First is a pledge of allegiance, please rise if you are able.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Laval, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Doring?
Here.
Mrs. Passeretti?
I'm here.
Mrs. Reynus? Dr. Reed?
Here.
Ms. Regan?
Here.
Dr. Roscoe? Mr. Ross? Mrs. Risaci?
Here.
Mr. Vodell? Seven members present and voting.
Thank you, Ms. Laval. Next is our student board representatives from Lyman Hall, Ms. Corso.
My name is Maggie Corso, I'm this year's student council president and I'm gonna be presenting this year's updates. So, first, we'd like to say that Lyman Hall finally has heat, so we'd like to thank, we'd like to thank Allstate and everybody else who helped out and worked tirelessly to fix that. This past Friday, we had our haunted hallways, we had a great community turnout with not only kids but parents as well. On October 8th, we had the Save a Life Tour, which covered driver experience for young drivers and driver behavior based on maturity. It covered improper driver behavior, safety restraints, impaired driving, distracted driving, and motorcycle awareness in operation. We had our culinary arts program at the Taste of Wallingford with their food truck, they ended up selling out on that Saturday, so that was extremely successful. Our football team has had back-to-back wins against two teams this past week. We're home again against, this Friday against Guilford. Every Tuesday after school, the counseling office led by head counselor Ms. Kopplick has been running college application workshops for seniors. And every Thursday during school, we've had college visits to come meet with students. We've had 15 colleges so far. This Thursday coming is UMass Lowell, Mary Mac, Western New England, and University of Maine. So far, we've had schools such as UConn, Bryant, UMass Boston, and the Savannah College of Art and Design, and Loyola. This past Saturday, our band won the 2A CT State Championships with a score of 90.3. They won awards of best color guard, best overall effect, and best visual category. The color guard got a 92, which was the top score in all divisions, which included 17 bands. And they are on their way to Nationals in Allentown, Pennsylvania, and we wish them the best of luck. Our Lyman Hall divers had success this past weekend on Saturday at the SEC Championships, placing second, fourth, and 14th. Our swimmers tonight competed at SEC Trials and will compete at Finals on Wednesday. We'd like to congratulate Tom Conklin, cross-country runner, who was placed on the All-SEC Team Two, two weeks ago. Another thing which has recently added to the school is the school's thrift shop run by social worker Ms. Jensen. It features donated clothes from all walks of life, it is open during before and after school, and it's located in the library for all students to access and shop at. Lastly, we have the upcoming events, we have the evening conferences tomorrow night, homecoming November 22nd, the Ag Open House, which is on November 21st, the Craft Fair November 23rd, and finally, Community Day, which is Veterans Day Monday, November 11th, where we'll have teams from all throughout the school raking leaves for the senior citizens in our community. That is the last thing we have for tonight, and I thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Corso, for a very thorough update, sounds like a lot of very exciting things are happening at Lyman Hall. Next, from Mark T. Sheehan, Mr. Kent, and Mr. McDonald.
Hello, I'm Nick Kent. Today, we have a lot to cover, so we'll get right into it. We'll just start by briefly recapping some of the stuff that has happened over the past month. The student council has had two successful school-wide events so far. Our sophomores won against our staff in our September 27th Staff First Student Volleyball Tournament, and our juniors contributed over 3,000 bottles to our total of 8,000 bottles and cans donated to the Student Council Bottle Drive fundraiser. On October 8th, students were exposed to all the new clubs they could join at our club recruitment day during our lunch waves. On October 11th, students saved lives by donating blood to the American Red Cross during our annual blood drive. And last Wednesday, grades nine, 10, and 11 took the PSATs while seniors spent the day finalizing their college applications. Tomorrow, parents will have the opportunity to meet with teachers during parent teacher conferences, and on Wednesday, students will be celebrating Red Ribbon Week by wearing red. On Thursday, the halls will be filled with Halloween costumes, where students will have another opportunity to earn spirit points for their grades. That day, Thursday, will also mark the end of our first marking period. Throughout the month of November, we will be hosting a can drive to benefit the community. Cans will be collected by donation through requirements to donate as part of purchasing a homecoming ticket and voluntary donations. On the evening of November 6th, 27 new inductees, new members will be inducted into the National Honor Society, where they will be honored in front of their family and peers. After this, they will be sorted into committees where they are seen to have the greatest potential.
On Monday, November 11th, students have the day off from school to honor and celebrate our veterans. However, many of these students will be taking the day off from school to rake the leaves of 17 houses throughout the community. These students will be helping veterans and the elderly in easing the stress of preparing for the winter. Over the weekend, student council representatives finished preparations for this event by meeting with the elderly recipients to reassure them that students would be coming again this year, to which they were met with immense gratitude. This is a greatly anticipated event within the school community. Last year, we had over 60 students volunteer their time to help the community, and this year, we expect to have even more. Moving back to events occurring within the school, make sure you stop by Sheehan at 7:00 PM between November 15th and 17th to see our Dramatic Arts Society's Harry Potter-themed production, Puffs. The following week, November 18th through 24th, students will be celebrating American Education Week through various activities during the day, as well as kicking off our Spirit Week on the 21st. On the 22nd, faculty and staff will compete head-on in the Faculty vs. Staff Powder Puff scrimmage at 2:00 PM. The Sheehan homecoming this year will be neon-themed, and it will occur on November 23rd at 6:30. Finally, we will end the month of November with our Powder Puff Appreciation Event on Tuesday, the 26th at 2:00, and the motorcade at 5:00. Wednesday, the students will fill the school with maroon and gold to show their school spirit and excitement for the Samaha Bowl, with our pep rally during the school day, followed by the game at 1:30. The excitement can already be felt around the school, and we can only expect the student bodies' anticipation to continue to grow as we approach closer. On Thanksgiving Day, come watch the Creeny Bowl at Sheehan at 10:30 before enjoying your Thanksgiving festivities. Thank you so much for your time, we look forward to what the month of November can bring us.
Donald, sounds like a lot of great things are happening at Sheehan as well. To our three student board representatives, thank you again for coming tonight, you're welcome to stay through the remainder of the meeting if you wish, you're also welcome to leave at this point if you wish. We have no presentation and awards tonight, so we're gonna move into our next item, which is public comment. I am gonna begin by reading our public comment statement. "The Board of Education welcomes you to our meeting, as we always look forward to public input." Before we begin, we want to review the process of comments and questions for this meeting. These terms are per Policies 9323, 9325.3, and 1120. Public comment is intended for the Board of Education as an entity, as individual board members do not have decision-making authority. Public comment is intended to allow citizens to comment and ask questions. These will either be answered during this meeting or at a later date by the superintendent if additional research or materials are required. We ask that everyone behaves in a respectful way that sets an example for the students we all wish to serve. With that, we will open it up to public comment. If anyone has a public comment, you could come up to the microphone? Yes, ma'am, just state your name and address for the record, please.
Megan Wininger, 27 Park Pond Circle. So, hi, everyone. I just, I think I'm confused. Has the Board of Education and the Town Council decided to move forward with one high school? No.
No, at this time, it's just the Board of Education has voted for one high school.
So, what are the next steps?
So, at our operations meeting last week, we shared an outline of what our next steps are. So, currently, we're in the process of finishing up our educational specs. So, once those are done, then the Board will have an opportunity to kind of take a look at those, to make any comments, they'll go out and be shared with public, and then we'll move forward with bringing them back here for the Board of Education to make a final decision on that. After that, we'll then have to move through the process of continuing on our end to look at what the final cost would be by working with our two consultants, looking at sites for a particular location for one high school, which is something we're very in the preliminary stages of doing. And so, from there, then it gets presented back to Town Council and the mayor, and discussions happen from there.
Okay, so, just as a follow-up to that, the amount of money and time that's been spent is pretty significant, or would you be able to speak to the amount of money that we've spent on...
I'd have to pull it up, but right now, we're spending funding on consulting. So, on the consultants, we are spending funding for that.
Right, so, I guess, as, you know, I have a child in the school system, I graduated Sheehan High School in 99, I just heard him mention the Creeny Bowl, Ms. Samaha was my A.D. At the meeting that I was at, maybe a year ago, okay, when we discussed, actually, you shared specifically, rebuilding as new, I believe, if the terminology is incorrect, you'll correct me, versus one mega-school, and rebuilding both Lyman Hall and Sheehan as new, at that point, was less expensive than, based on your proposed budget. So, I guess, you know, as a resident, and, you know, people are paying taxes, and their hard-earned money is going to, you know, these consultants being paid and sort of running around navigating this, why would we be looking into something that would cost more than something that would cost less, rebuilding as new?
So, we have to look at everything, and the Board of Education way back had made that decision, based on all the facts that they had, to move forward with one consolidated high school, without going into all the specifics at this particular moment, because it will come out as we move forward. We also have to look at the reimbursement rates. The reimbursement rates for renovate as new as to build one high school are different. And so, you also have to take a look at the standards that the state puts out and what those rates are, and then exactly how much they'll give us as reimbursement, based on the size of the school, physical building, and the number of students that are in that school. So, there's a lot of factors, and without having it all in front of me to go into specific details, but there are numerous factors that go into both of those. And so, the Board had decided already to move forward with one consolidated high school. That was our first step. And so, then, to move forward after that is for us to then get more specifics in terms of what the cost is, hence the educational specs and the decision that the Board made to move forward to hire the consultants.
Okay, so...
Now, Ms. Wininger, if you don't mind me interjecting, I really appreciate your interest, we are at three minutes, I do want to keep this moving as we have a lot more on the agenda.
Oh, was there a time?
However, if, yeah, it is a three-minute time limit.
Oh, did you make mention of that?
No, I did not have that mentioned, but that's been our practice, it is a three-minute time limit. Also, this is intended to be predominantly public comment, however, our contact info is all on the website, you could feel free to shoot me an email or give me a call, I'd be happy to discuss this with you further. Our contact info.
Oh, okay. Oh, well, maybe somebody else will follow up here, because I think this is actually really important, and I think the town spoke, I think it was very clear how the town felt as it relates to putting the high schools together, and I'm not sure how the communication went out, so that was another one of my questions.
I appreciate that, please feel free to give me a call, I'd be happy to discuss further with you this week. Is there anyone else here for a public comment?
Hi, I'm Erin Huckel, I live at Six Buttonwood Circle. I do have a follow-up question as to what she was saying, what are the checks and balances that we have in place for when you decide to spend money on a certain project? Who okay's it, and how do we know what's okay and what's not as a taxpayer? Like, do you guys have free reign?
So, we get our budget approved by the Town Council each year, it is a block grant from there, then there are also additional requests, for example, we request capital items, although tonight, as we said, this is predominantly public comment, any questions would be answered at a later point, I'm not trying to cut you off, you certainly have your three minutes if you wish to give comments or ask any questions, just please understand we might not have answers to everything tonight.
So, where do we get that information, I guess, is my question, like, how do I know who's watching you guys, because as a taxpayer, that's what we're concerned about.
Again, tonight's not really the form for us to be giving answers to questions, once the money is allocated to the Board of Education, it's then up to us to spend it from there. And you also would be welcome to give me a call if you wish to discuss further, yes, Mrs. Regan, our operations committee chair.
I'm the operations committee chair, the second Monday of every month, we do have an operations committee, and that's the budget. And so, that's where you can come and you can sit, how, and we go through line, Mr. Barone presents the budget to us, he comes to us with any special funding requests, and so that's really where we talk about the financing, you are more than welcome to, it isn't online, it's, you can come on via Google Meet.
I was there last week.
Okay, so, and that's where we go ahead and discuss, and that's where some of these special requests are made. The funding for the consultants was allocated last year, so that was something that would not have been discussed in any of the recent meetings.
Okay.
I also have a question about curriculum, I know this is a comment section, but I'm just concerned with the iReady situation at the middle schools. I feel like there's not a good system in place where you're enforcing iReady on children for a certain amount of time, and from my perspective, how do I know my son is not a monkey on a keyboard hitting things versus actually getting something out of it? So, I am a little concerned that this is being forced during when, which is supposed to be a what I need, when you're telling me what I need, when I don't think my son is getting anything out of it. So, I am concerned about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here for public comment?
Hi, good evening, Julia Pichilli, 39 Cliffside Drive. I just had a question about, I know there's been so much focus on the one high school, but consideration for all the other schools in the district, are there other simultaneous projects that are going on to consider, the renovations that don't need to have so much decision-making going on, you know, we're keeping the locations of all of these elementary schools and these middle schools, so that was just something, I wasn't sure if that's also in the process of being considered.
Yes, you could feel free to tune into our operations committee meetings, that might be the best place for you to get answers to some of those questions.
We do have a 10-year waterfall capital improvement plan that goes through, and that is, that's posted on the web, is that correct?
Yes.
That's out on the website, and so, that 10-year, and it's actually in our packets this week, that goes through each and every item that Mr. DePtoole and his team have worked on to identify, they worked with Central Office and all of the administrators of the schools to identify which projects need priority, and so, they have prioritized projects, and you've seen some of the boilers have been replaced. Now, that's a little flexible, depending on what pops up, we never know, that's why Lyman Hall had to be replaced, maybe it jumped ahead of another boiler, but they are keeping on top of the other issues in the other schools, we are well aware that all the schools need work. The primary focus is, the reason why we're working on the high schools first is because we're trying to not have the students at the lower levels have to follow construction all the way through their high, all the way through their school careers. So, we're starting at the high school, even though we know that the middle school and the lower schools need work as well, while we're not ignoring them, we are certainly going to be paying attention to them and making the work and the repairs as needed to those schools as well.
Okay. I do want to offer as an example that our neighbor town, Meriden, did save their high schools for last, and they did work on the elementaries, and I don't think it really impacted some of the children that I've known and grown up with, being from foreign raised in that town, so. Anyway, thank you, I apologize that I wasn't caught up on a lot of this...
No, it's okay.
And I appreciate all the time that you've served on this course.
Thank you, is there anyone else here for public comment?
Can we go twice?
No, I believe we are limited to one attempt, am I correct in saying that?
I have no problem letting her go again, if she would like to go again.
Superintendent.
So, I guess, you know, with all due respect, if money is being spent on searching for a location, and we're navigating bus routes, and we're paying consultants, and we don't have boilers that work, do you think that the priorities are a little off? Is there, has there ever been mold testing done in the schools, Moran namely?
I am, I would have to defer off to our facilities, I'm sure that that's something that they take very seriously. I mean, we are, I don't, if you want to try and, we're not ignoring every other problem that's out there, just to promote or to move the schools along, we absolutely acknowledge that all the schools need work and attention, and we do have a 10-year capital plan specifically to draw, to address as all those problems that have been identified, so it's not that we're putting them on the backburner, and we are working with the towns, such as the boilers are coming from town funding as well, that will be something that will be bonded out, so that's something that the town, that we have to work very closely with the town in order to get the funding for that.
It just seems as though, as it relates to other towns, many of what you might have had in your research last week, we're not, we're not keeping up, okay? So, it, this is, you know, where we live, this is where I've grown up, now my son is in the school system, and they're suffering, these kids, so we're running on a goose chase, and the kids can't even breathe, it's so hot in the schools. Lyman Hall was out for three days last week, or whatever, excuse me, a few weeks ago, we knew that boiler was gonna need replacing, how it got busted, and children miss school, is beyond the realm of my comprehension. So, I think that as residents with children in the school system, it all matters to us, you know, and to feel like we're being brushed to the side, it doesn't feel good, these are our children, and you guys have taken, you have a heightened level of responsibility on the Board of Education to do right by them, okay? So, I'd like to have more answers and less go on the website. Look me in the eye, tell me what's going on, what are you doing for our kids? Because our buildings are falling apart!
We are certainly trying, and I can defer to you, Ms. Bilal.
So, we did discuss the boilers at length at our last operations meeting, to go over what the timeline was for that. In terms of all the boilers within the schools, and all the items that are capital items, as we call them, they are all on our 10-year waterfall plan, so we've identified that, we go over that plan consistently, it's broken down by school, and then it's broken down by the district as a whole. The challenge with that is the funding for that, so there are not always things that we have the funding for. To compare the boilers with the consultants is very different, the consultants did not cost nearly as much as what the boilers did at Lyman Hall. The boilers were funded over the summer, but in the timing to get the boilers delivered and installed, and the availability of the permanent boilers, it was not in time where the weather was changing. And so, we did act to get a temporary boiler, we did go to Town Council for bid approval for that, to get a bid waiver, on October 8th, we did get it, and then it could not be delivered. And so, then, all of us at Central Office did act to get another temporary boiler, and we did get an emergency bid waiver from the mayor. But even with the delivery on a Sunday of the temporary boiler, our outside vendors take three to four days to install the boiler, because of the extensive amount of work that it took to be able to install it. And they did work as long as they could to get it done as fast as they could, and so that's why we're here. I do have a priority list that has gone to the mayor already, back in the spring, itemizing the boilers in their priority and their need, so he is aware of that, they are expensive items that we and our budget do not have the funding for, and so we do have to go to the town for that. And to points that were made earlier, we're always looking at that capital plan, and things are coming up because they're breaking last, you know, we can only plan so much, and there is a need, and so then we're reprioritizing, but then there's not always the supply of what we need as quickly as we need it. And so, we're working on that to do the best we can to be ahead of it and be proactive, and that was the point of the plan, to try and make it more proactive, to identify everything that we have, in where the need is.
Right, our schools are just falling apart, so...
I understand.
I mean, I think, you know, that's the bottom line, right? You can, you can, you know, share all these things, and at the end of the day, our schools are falling apart, our children are in these buildings all day, every day, I'd love to see the mold testing that's been done throughout the buildings in town, I'll email you about that, because that's really important, if our children are inhaling mold, that's gonna be a big problem, I have a sneaking suspicion there could be some in Moran, I'm only saying that because I have an allergy to it and I broke out when I was there for the day. But, you know, I just, I'm going to be loud, okay, and respectfully loud, because my kid is in this school system, and it matters. I don't know how many of you guys have children in this school system, but we do, so...
Thank you, ma'am, I really appreciate your interest.
Do you have a child in the school system?
Ma'am, I had mentioned at the beginning our three policies, one of those is Policy 1120, Policy 1120 states, quote, "The chairperson of the meeting has the right to limit the length of discussion and/or curtail public discussion at any time," end quote. Next is number seven, the consent, oh, I apologize, is there somebody else here for public comment?
Yes.
I apologize.
So, Jill Corso, 3 Juniper Street, I have three students in the district, I'm the principal at Lyman Hall, I've lived in Wallingford for 20 years, and I wasn't planning on talking, actually, but I'm going to. So, I just wanted to say thank you to this board, the previous board, and the board before that, because we have spent the better part of my 10 years in district trying to work to get our schools in a position where we could begin to do some of these, this reconstruction. And I've been at every meeting that we've had over the past 10 years, every community seminar that we've had, every community outreach that we've had, I have attended all of these events, I have spoken at most of them, I have been on opposite ends from some of the people on the board now, and we have had wonderful conversation and debate over what we should have one high school or two. We have made a decision, we're moving forward, and I truly appreciate that, and I know how hard you've worked on it, and I don't want to see anything get halted. I appreciated the meeting last week and the focus that we had on moving forward with the project. Obviously, there's two large hurdles that we have to get on, we've got to find property, and we've got to get through the Town Council and the mayor, right? None of that's gonna be easy, but really, the hope is that we can get through it so that we can get our kids into a building they deserve. I have been at Lyman Hall for 10 years, as I said, every time my student leadership group, my daughter being one of them, leaves to attend an event, they come back to Lyman Hall saddened by what they come back to. And the more we talk about the wonderful Powder Puff game and the amazing Thanksgiving football game, and that being the reason we don't want to build a new high school, the more embarrassing it gets to live in this community. So, we want to build a state-of-the-art facility that can prepare our students for the next level of education, and whatever job they choose to get when they leave here, it's got nothing to do with Powder Puff and football, and everything to do with academics and preparation leading them to the next step. So, that's what the focus needs to be. This, I think one of the biggest mistakes this community ever made was splitting and dividing, right? In my mind, that's just my personal opinion. We are Wallingford, we are not Lyman Hall and Sheehan, right? We are Wallingford. The biggest mistake this community ever made was dividing and splitting into two, and I think we've suffered for the past 30 years because of it, and I think one of the best things that we could do would bring each other back together, have one beautiful, amazing high school, not a, this would not be a large high school, it would be a sort of large high school in Connecticut, but in the rest of the world, it would be a decently sized high school. All right, so that's really what I think the focus, we really need to look at what's important, and that is the academic focus for students in Wallingford, what we could provide students academically. Athletically, our teams would be large, they'd be fully, fully built together, freshman JV varsity, preparing for the proper levels, that's really what we need to remain focused on, preparing our students academically. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corso. Yes, ma'am.
I just want to know, if we're focusing on academics, why the Town Council would get rid of our curriculum coordinators in the school systems? I think that was a really bad choice.
Thank you, ma'am. And if there's no one else for public comment, we will move on to the consent agenda, which is number seven. I will make a motion to approve items number 7.1 through 7.3, and 7.5 through 7.8, is there a second? Okay, there's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries. Next is items removed from the consent agenda, 7.4, Mrs. Regan, this is your removal, so I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, I am sorry, I only wanted 7.4A removed from the consent agenda.
Oh, I apologize, Mrs. Regan.
It's okay, everything else was fine, and I fully intend on approving this. I just wanted to ask Mrs. Turner, because I was asked over, since we approved this, about the tuition, and I'm sure... about the tuition, and I'm sure, you know, this is all relatively new, but I did get the question asked if this was gonna be something that was gonna be raised every year, or if it would be something that would stay stable until, or reassessed. I guess they just were, I guess the concern was that we were gonna keep raising it every year, I said all I could do is ask the question.
At this time, we're anticipating it will be stable for at least the meantime.
Okay.
We're not anticipating increasing it year after year.
Okay, that's all I needed to know, thank you so much for that.
Is there any other discussion on this? If not, I will make a motion to approve 7.4. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that motion carries? Next is correspondence, Mrs. Passeretti.
Thank you, Mr. Daring. We have quite a bit of correspondence tonight. The first section of this will be accepting some donations. The first donation that we're going to be accepting is from the Team Toyota Dealer Match Program, which is part of the Toyota Grant Program, and we are accepting a donation that is a value of $10,000, and this is to provide funds for the Pond Hill Schools Community to meet learning and social, economical, sorry, social and emotional needs of the students for the upcoming and future school years. So we'd like to thank Toyota for that generous donation. The next donation was received from the Rotary of Wallingford, and they donated the approximate value of $500 in dictionaries and thesauri for students in grades three and five, and we would like to, I take that back, the actual value, we have the actual value, is over $500, and it's significant, it's actually $3,258. So we'd like to thank Rotary of Wallingford for that generous donation. The last donation here is from the Amazon Sort Center and Clean the World Global. Amazon and Clean the World Global donated 200 backpacks filled with miscellaneous school supplies to our district totaling a value of $9,900. We'd like to thank them for their generous donation. And lastly, I have a few items of correspondence that we received at Central Office. The first is a thank you note, and the note reads, "Thank you so much for the lovely flowers and the kind words, your thoughtfulness was very much appreciated. Signed, The Bryant Family." And next, we have another thank you note. Dear Mrs. Bellisi, Central Office staff and board members, on behalf of the Moses Y. Beach community, I thank you for the recent library book donation, made in honor of our Teacher of the Year, Brianna Wolkwitz. Kevin Hanks's new picture book, The World and Everything in It, is truly stunning and will be enjoyed by our students and staff for many years to come. Your continued support of our library is greatly appreciated. Sincerely, Ann Poirier, Moses Y. Beach School Librarian. And the last piece of correspondence is another thank you note. Dear Board of Ed members, Central Office and staff, thank you very much for the gorgeous flowers you sent after my surgery. They certainly helped to brighten my mood and room. I really appreciate all of your check-ins as well. Looking forward to healing so I can rejoin you all soon. Thanks for all you are doing in my absence. With so much gratitude and appreciation, Marla Roscoe. That is all the correspondence I have. Mr. Daring, back to you.
Yes, Mr. Ross.
I'd just like to mention that there was an event last week at Moran Middle School, which the students raised $30,000 for. It started out as a $20,000 challenge, and the principal said if you raised 20, I'll kiss a pig. Well, he raised 30, and the mayor had to kiss the pig. But besides that, I just want to mention that these kids went out in a matter of weeks and raised $30,000 for the school, not for a specific event or anything, but to help the school. And I think that just says a lot about our youth who are coming up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Next on our agenda is committee reports. Our first one is the ACES governing board. Mr. Ross.
Yes, we had a meeting last Thursday, and I was given a plethora of paperwork. One thing that I'm very interested in is, it was a two-volume book, a facilities assessment report, a deferred maintenance capital improvement plan, which is really true, what they did, they hired a consultant who went through all the schools that the ACES controlled, and found what was wrong with the windows or floors or what it was, and they came up with a plan, how they're gonna fix it. So I think anybody would like to see that. Also, we got the annual report. The annual report also is very interesting, some of the things that ACES has done with children and with young adults. It shows some of what they have done since they went to ACES. Anybody would like to see that annual report, that's here. And then we also got a thing, that ACES were here for you, this is a marketing tool that they use, and I don't know if anybody's been paying attention to television lately, but ACES is doing a lot of marketing and television, a lot of marketing in this accessory. So anyway, I have four items here, if somebody would like to borrow, you can check the purpose here, okay? Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Vado.
Ray, do you know, I know they're in the middle of remodeling the former junior high in North Haven to make that all of ACES. Do you know, did you hear anything about them closing the village school on Temple Street in North Haven?
I don't know.
I think Mrs. Turner shaking her head, yes. They are closing it completely? They are, huh? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ross for that update, and thank you for everything you do with the ACES governing board. Next is the Systemwide PTAC, Mrs. Lator.
So, Systemwide PTAC, the meeting is Wednesday evening, and it is virtual for anyone who would like to pop on and see what's happening.
Thank you, Mrs. Lator. Next is the Special Education PTAC update, Mrs. Turner.
I am extremely proud to share that this past Thursday, we had an amazing Special Education PTAC meeting. It was a bilingual meeting, so we have been trying for the past couple of years, and we were finally successful. We had a fully translated meeting where we did a presentation, the basics of special And Lisandra from the Assistant Director from SCOW presented for us, and she did the translation. We had 20 families who represented, who had children from the ages of three to 20, which was just, it was just great, it was just really, really fantastic. All the families were able to share with each other, they asked questions, they were just so respectful, and just to be able to have a welcoming meeting in both Spanish and English, it was just something that I think, going forward, we're just really, really excited about, and I think to be able to provide that opportunity was just amazing. So, you know, and I think for us to be able to have that relationship with SCOW and to build upon that is just something that we would love to continue to do. Our next meeting is on December 10th, we're gonna do the ins and outs of the IEP and the IEP system. That was a request from both our experienced families and our new families, so we will be doing that, and once again, we're going to try to do that in both Spanish and English, and hope to have families there.
That's phenomenal, thank you for that update, Mrs. Turner. Next is the Food Services Strategic Plan Committee, Mr. Bondi.
Okay, the Food Service, let me start over. Food Service Strategic Planning Committee meeting was held on Thursday, October 17th, was a quick meeting, was just general information, where I discussed our mandated state financial report that we need to do every year for the state. And along with that, we have to come up with a plan for spending excess funds, because we are not-for-profit, obviously. So I shared with the committee my plan for that, and like I said, it was a quick meeting. I do not yet have a date for the next meeting, but we'll get to that shortly. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is our Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee, Dr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Daring. Just a couple of announcements, on Friday, the Racial Diversity Committee, along with SCOW, had an event for the Dia de Muerto celebration, it was held at the library, and well-attended, along with celebrations and a food truck. Tonight, after the library's annual meeting, there will be the Umbundo storytellers will perform their story concert, in which they will share experiences of many ways that the community shares love within their families in the black and brown communities. It is founded by Denise Page, who is one of the DEI facilitators and trainers. And also, on November 13th, also at the library, there will be a community program facilitated by one of our teachers, Ms. Maldonado, it's called Lost in Translation, a community conversation on multilingual experiences, and she is one of the members of the racial justice team in town.
Thank you for the update, Dr. Thompson. Then I have the report from the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education. CAVE has been continuing to host a series of webinars, information is all on the website. Additionally, the delegate assembly, as well as the convention, are both coming up towards the end of the year. That information as well is on the website and has been emailed out to the board members. As always, if anybody needs help finding any of that, just let me know. For item number 11, we have no old business, so we will go on into item number 12. I will make a motion for the board to go into executive session, along with Superintendent Bellisi and Dr. Thompson, for the discussion of approval of leaves of absence. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? We are out of executive session, back into the main meeting. Number 13, Instructional Committee, Mr. Vado and Dr. Reed.
Good evening, I have an approval for a leave of absence, I'd like to make a motion that a leave of absence for Alexandra Germain, approved without pay, be approved without pay, and in accordance with the provisions of the current teacher's contract from November 18th, 2024, through December 20th, 2024.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions?
Abstentions? Motion moves.
Thank you, Ms. Vado. Next we have the Operations Committee, Ms. Regan and Ms. Reynus.
Good evening, so the Operations Committee met last Monday, October 21st, and we discussed a few things. We got an update in terms of the Wallingford Public School Consolidated High School project outline, and that outline is here, it is in the packets, if anyone would like to see what that is like. We also got an update on the boiler situation, and we did discuss what the future projects look like in terms of boilers and staying ahead of those. And then we also talked about the pre-K tuition, which is the question that I asked Ms. Turner today, and so, and then we got, of course, our financials, and we're only a month in, so we're running a surplus right now of $523,000, but I do expect that not to be the course of business, as we are only a month into the school year. And then Mr. Bondi gave us his cafeteria reports, and Mr. Deptula gave us an update with regards to the Moses Y. Beach lavatory, and that the boilers at Pond Hill were also up and running and in full service, so everyone can be nice and warm. So I do thank everyone, and that was it.
Thank you, Mrs. Regan. Next is the Administrative Report, Superintendent Bellisi.
Good evening, and thank you. Many of the things I was actually gonna share in my report, we've already discussed along the way from our students, but I did want to just highlight tomorrow is our fall conferences at all levels, so we do have an early dismissal day tomorrow, and there are conferences at all of our schools beginning tomorrow evening, I believe it begins at 5 o'clock. One of the other things we're continuing, as it was brought up before, we're continuing to focus on the boilers. And so, we discussed the Lyman Hall boilers a little bit earlier, and they have been up and running, but I also want to highlight the fact that two of our boilers for Pond Hill were delivered this fall. They were installed and have been up and running since, I believe, October 15th, which was that Tuesday, and so I thank Mr. Deptula and his team, and our outside vendors that worked to get that up and going. And we will continue to meet with the mayor and discuss the needs of the boilers as we go. As I said earlier, he did ask for the priority list for our boilers. I know that even though I made that list in the spring, things can change, and so we stay on top of that, and we are in constant communication with him to keep him posted on how things are going. So we'll continue to do that, and that is in our 10-year capital plan. The other thing we've started to work on already here at Central Office is the budget process. So we have met with all of our building administrators to go over the budget and begin that process on the preliminary ask from all of the building administrators. They have spent time talking with Mr. Deptula to review the needs of their buildings, which will eventually get added on to the 10-year capital plan. If there are items that are not on there already, it's part of the budget process, they will reach out to Mrs. Veyu as well, and I know Mrs. Lator and Mrs. Turner have worked with their departments to kind of pull together and look at the items that are needed, both on the curriculum side and on the special education side. So we are in the process of having those meetings, we'll start this week with meeting now with our Central Office team to talk about their budgets, and then Mr. Barone will work to put them together, and they will be ready to begin presenting, for me to present the budget towards the end of January. So we did share all of those dates with all of you, but wanted to kind of give you at least a big overview as to where we are, and what we're starting to work on, and what we're looking at going forward this year. And capital items will be one of the items, as I've done in the past, that will be an additional ask outside of the budget, once we put that capital plan together. The hope is to bring that revised capital plan to all of you prior to presenting the budget, so you're aware of the new items that were added, and the way we prioritize the items underneath each school, and then what it looks like overall for the district as well. So we'll continue with that process as we move through, it's a large process, as you know, starts in January and continues all the way through. We are continuing to meet with our two consultants, as we've mentioned a little bit earlier, both from Colliers and from the SLAM Collaborative, to continue our work at looking at the educational specs right now. We are hoping, according to the timeline that we presented back at the Operations Committee meeting, to have that preliminary look for all of you in December, and then to go through those final changes, if needed, and then have that approved, and then continue on with the other items that Scott Pelham from Colliers had discussed with us. It is a project that is, has a lot of steps required of it, but I think it's something that we've started down this road many years ago, we started back in 2016 with this, when Dr. Menzo was here, and I think it's something we need to see through to get a better understanding of exactly how big the school would be. We said earlier, it's for an approximate of 1,600 students, based on an enrollment study we've previously had done. We are currently starting to look for potential sites for one location, for one high school, that is in the very beginning stages, but it is something that we're starting to look at. There are a multitude of steps that would go with that before that is formally identified, but it is something that we are looking at, because it all becomes part of the larger picture when it does get presented to people in the town. picture when it does get presented to people in the town, when it gets presented to the mayor, and then eventually to Town Council for decisions moving forward. Um, so there are a multitude of steps, and we'll keep everyone informed along the way as we move through that process. Um, I think those were the things I had to share with us, so I'm going to pass it on to Mrs. Latour to share from the Curriculum Department.
Good evening, everyone. Um, it's hard to believe it's the end of October, so a couple of things that we're working on currently is Election Day PD. It's a huge day within the district, planning for our different departments at all levels, so the office is working very hard to take in feedback from their teachers and provide meaningful PD on the day off from school, which is, uh, a week from tomorrow. We are also starting to look at the course catalog, which is more shocking than the fact that it's the end of October. Um, we are updating the course catalog for the scheduling process, which will start around January, so for our eighth graders and high school students, they will receive the course catalog online and in print, um, around the end of December, beginning of January, so that they can start to have discussions with their families to determine what their next steps will be for scheduling for next year. And then finally, um, Dave Olman, our Career and Technical Education Coordinator, this year, um, has established some, um, job shadow, job experience, field trips for students at the high school, and this past week, he brought fourteen students from Lyman Hall and Sheehan to visit the ironworkers local four twenty-four in North Haven. Um, it's a, it's a day where students can go over to the union headquarters, they get a presentation about what the job is, um, the apprenticeship programs that the different unions offer, future job prospects, and then students are able to move into the shop where they had a cha, they had a chance to practice welding, and using an oxygen acetylene torch to cut iron, which was very exciting for our students, and I hope I did not butcher that. Um, we do have upcoming, these are things that are, um, advertised through the Google Classroom that Mr. Olman runs at both high schools. Um, November eighteenth, he's taking kids over to the Carpenter's Union. November twenty-fifth, the Electrical Union, and December tenth, the Plumbing and Pipe Fitters Union, and he'll run trips again in the spring as well to ensure that everyone has an opportunity who might be interested, as they are beginning to finalize their life after high school planning. So this was, um, really exciting for Mr. Olman to do. He was thrilled that he had fourteen students from both high schools to attend. Um, and, uh, we also have plans, um, in place for different organizations to come into the two high schools to do like a lunch and learn during the lunch waves, so students can come down to the school counseling office or into the library to learn about what it takes to go through the police academy or the fire academy, just to, to provide options for our students who may, uh, for students who may feel that going on to, um, another four years of schooling is not something that is in their plan at this time, and they want to explore their options as well for career planning after high school. So, um, I will keep the board in, in the loop as to what those plans are.
I see we have a couple of questions from the board. I saw Mr. Vado's hand first.
Sorry, Mrs. Regan. Um, did you mention the Carpenter's Union by any chance?
I did, yes.
The one over here on, um, Route one fifty?
Yes.
Because I, I know somebody who's very involved in that, and I've been in that building. It's amazing. I don't know if you've been in there.
I have.
They have classrooms, um, and they, they are trying to link up with the hu, with the school, uh, for an internship, so, uh, I'm glad to hear that sound there. You might want to just remind Mr. Olman of that.
I will, and, um, it's on November eighteenth, so it's coming up soon.
Thank you, Mrs. Regan.
Um, I just want to, um, go back to, I think it was in public comments, someone had said that the curriculum coordinators were let go. Uh, I just want to make it clear, it was the instructional coaches. We still have curriculum coordinators, correct? I just want to make sure that we had, we still have our curriculum coordinators, correct?
We do. We did, um, not this past budget year, uh, two, two budgets ago, we did lose a curriculum coordinator through the budget process, um, but we have, uh, six curriculum coordinators that cover the different departments. Um, last budget season, we did lose all of the instructional coaches at the elementary and middle school.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Passeretti.
And just to give clarification to people who aren't familiar with the curriculum coordinators, can you go through, not the names, but which, um, departments they support?
Sure. We have, um, six curriculum coordinators. We have a Career and Technical Education Coordinator, who, um, handles middle school and high school, computer science, business, family consumer science, tech ed, and med careers. I just, I said computer science. I, I feel like I'm missing one, but it might come to me. Um, we have a Fine Arts and World Language Coordinator, deals with art and music, as well as all of our world languages, K-12, these are K-12 positions. We have a Math Coordinator, K-12. We have a Science Coordinator, K-12, and then the Humanities Coordinators, we do have two. One is broken up, uh, for K-5, and the other is 612, because Humanities deals with not only just English Language Arts, but Social Studies and, um, Intervention and Library, as well as English Language Arts. And Dave also does Family Consumer Science, Culinary. Thank you.
Thank you. So they, they've got their hands full.
Yes, they do. Um, you know, uh, as you know, I could talk all night about this, but, um, we are continually, um, revising curriculum to keep it current, um, with all of the changes that come down from the state, obviously. Assessment practices as well. They vet all of our instructional materials. They plan all of our professional development. So it is a very large job that is very broad across multiple content areas, and, you know, we've done a lot of great things with this group of people in the last, um, you know, seven years, so.
And are they also reassessing our curriculum as we get test scores in? Are they?
They do. They do a lot of data analysis as it relates to our reading and math. Um, you know, we do that, uh, not only stemming from their work, our office, but then when we work with our building principals as well, and, and part of what makes Wallingford unique is the fact that we have our full day of PD that we do before school and on Election Day, and, and that's typical in, in many, many school systems. But the, um, minimum days or early release days that we have eight times throughout the year, they also plan, and it gives them an opportunity to, um, intimately know the teachers at every level within their department and be able to not only, uh, review data as it's ongoing throughout the school year, but, um, to also plan assessments, and, um, we write our curriculum. We write our curriculum, and, and that is also what makes Wallingford quite unique. So, um, I, I'm going to plug that we are one of sixteen school districts who received the waiver for K-three reading, and that was huge. And, and that comes, uh, directly from the hard work and dedication of the curriculum office and our teachers, who volunteer to write our curriculum, so thank you for letting me. Bless you. Um, just give them a little shout-out, because they all are incredibly hardworking.
I appreciate that, that detailed explanation. Thank you. N- necessary, unnecessary explanation.
Thank you, and I did see a couple other hands, Mrs. Reynus.
Oh, thank you so much. Um, I just wanted to inquire, um, the, the student board representatives had mentioned that fifteen colleges had come into one of the schools, and I know that, um, you had just mentioned that there was some work introducing the students to, um, the trades. Um, did the armed forces come in to speak to the students at all?
Uh, yes, they do. They do.
And is that around the same time all of this is going on?
So a lot of that is, is ongoing, Mrs. Reynus, so, um, I can find out specifically if they have a calendar of events already scheduled, and I can get that to the board.
Thank you. Yes, I'd just be curious, you know, for students that are looking at alternate paths, you know. Thank you.
Thank you, and I also saw Mrs. Rosaci had a hand up.
Yes, I just wanted to first, um, thank all the members of the public that came to speak. I know it's hard to take time, um, out of your schedule to come and speak, and the processes can be really confusing, um, as being one of two new board members, there are still parts of the processes that I'm learning. Um, so I appreciate you trying to come and understand how the, how the processes work. As far as the high school is concerned, the board has already voted to go to one high school, so now there's a process of what's going on with this study to bring the additional details that the Town Council and the mayor are looking for, so it feels like the process is really slow, um, and there were some complications with, um, who we are, who we are using, and so it took a little bit longer than, than normal. Um, and so I appreciate you coming here. I don't ever want anyone to feel like they're brushed to the side or silenced, um, so I apologize if you feel that way. I, I think we all encourage the public to come and speak. You are, uh, these are your children that you're concerned about, and so there's also, I, I think there's sort of two buckets of things here. As you can hear from all that's going on, there's, there's lots of really good things going on in Wallingford Public Schools and really good programming. Our buildings are very separate, um, and it's been something that I think the board and the administration has been battling for years due to being under-resourced by the town, and so with that ten-year waterfall plan, it's, it's cost over a hundred million dollars for every single, to fix every single P, thing that is on that ten-year waterfall plan, and that's just to maintain buildings. It's not to improve anything or make anything state-of-the-art, so I appreciate everyone's voices here. I think it would also be great if there were voices at the Town Council meeting. Um, I know I personally have invited the mayor to come to these meetings, and I have not yet seen him come to one, although this is sixty percent of the town's budget is education, and so there needs to be, um, some more advocacy at the town level, and even using our legislators at the state level to really get us what we need, because the catch-up is, is going to be crazy. So as we move forward with the budget pieces, there's going to be the capital projects that are separate just from keeping the school system going at the level that it's at now, and it's the town that's going to have to continue to give us the resources that are needed, and we're going to need extra resources to catch up. So I appreciate you all coming. Um, it is really hard to keep up with the, with what the rules are, or, or the way in which, the order in which things are done, so I appreciate your patience, and again, I never want anyone to feel like they're brushed to the side, so thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rosaci. Mr. Ross.
Yeah, I believe, uh, uh, we posted earlier in the week, the schedule of veterans coming to the area. I think you posted it in one of your updates.
I'm sorry, Steve.
You posted that in one of your updates.
The veterans days are. Oh, yes. Oh.
That, that was posted earlier.
Right. We have a couple of other things to, I'll let Mrs. Turner. Doctor, I couldn't stick to the administrative.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board members? If not, Superintendent Belizzi will turn it back over to you and your team.
Thank you. Um, Mrs. Turner, I'll let you go first, and then I'll, I'll follow up with a couple of things at the end, so go ahead.
So just a couple of celebrations and honors that we have from the special education world. Um, our parents, so the state really wants to recognize the involvement of the Wallingford Special Education Parents. They have been, um, our community has been invited to be representatives on the Connecticut Parent Advocacy Council Roundtable, which is quite an honor. Uh, we received an invitation to have some of our amazing parent leaders on a statewide parent leaders roundtable. The roundtable will provide regular networking opportunities with other parent leaders from across the state. Um, they will have networking opportunities, training, federal and state, special education updates, leadership development activities, um, data training, as well as serving on the statewide councils. So if we have any parents that are interested in, uh, being part of this council and roundtable, please reach out to me. I've already had, uh, three parents reach out to me to say they were interested, which is fantastic. This is quite an honor. Um, I'm really proud that we've had parents invited to this. We had two of our teachers and our preschool coordinator invited to present at a national conference in Anaheim next week, at the, um, National Association for the Education of Young Children, uh, NAIC, and they will be presenting next week, so we are very proud of the national, uh, recognition of our preschool program. Um, and, uh, I was invited to represent Wallingford at a national forum, uh, special education forum on November thirteenth. There'll be representatives from across the country at the Connecticut Legislative Office Building, um, to discuss special education, uh, legislation and law. So, um, I will be on a panel, and I will be asked my opinion on where we should be going for special education law in the future. So we are, Wallingford has been asked on all three levels, parents, teacher, and administrators to be representative, so I think, you know, there's, there's some celebrations that we should re, be remembering, and I think that's important for us to remember.
That's phenomenal. Yes, Ms. Vado.
Could you, um, would you mind, Mrs. Turner, just, uh, shortly going over that first part again, with the parents, the parent group?
Sure. So, um, the Connecticut Parent Advocacy Council, they, uh, reached out to me. They have recognized our parents as an active group, and they invited our parents to be part of the statewide parents' roundtable. So we received an invitation for our parents to be a leader on the statewide group, and they will be, um, any parents that are interested, we can have, um, a parent representative, so, uh, if we have any interest, we already have a couple, we, they can be part of the roundtable, they can provide, um, sorry, as part of the roundtable, they will have, uh, networking opportunities, they will be parent leaders across the state, so they will be invited to represent on federal and state, um, leadership teams. They will, uh, receive special education updates, they will be part of special education development activities, they will receive training opportunities, they will be in the front line in terms of, um, data interpretation, so the state will come to them and say, this is what we're seeing in the state with students. What do you see? What do you see with your child? Um, they will, um, serve on peer-to-peer supports, and they will serve on different representative councils.
And they'll report back to the board at some point?
We can ask them to report back to us, yes.
And is it just parents that are involved in this?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's great. It's quite a privilege for us to be involved in that.
It is a privilege.
We've come a long way.
It's exciting. Lots of good things happening here within the district, um, and a good opportunity for us to be able to celebrate those. Um, I just wanted to share two other things I know Mr. Ross just mentioned, but I did share with all of you, the Veterans Day assemblies, uh, that will be happening at all of our elementary and middle schools, um, so that was included. I think most of the festivities start on, um, November seventh, and will continue on for the next couple of days. Um, and then the last thing I just wanted to share, um, was that I had, as I had notified all of you, um, on Friday, we had gotten word that, um, Dr. Joseph Sarasola had passed away, or Dr. Seas, he was known. Um, he was the superintendent here in Wallingford from nineteen ninety to two thousand and two, and so I just asked that we keep, uh, his family in everyone's thoughts. Uh, we thank him for all of his years of service and dedication to the families, to the community, and to the students here in Wallingford. Um, so, you know, I just wanted to make sure I mentioned that at the end of our meeting, so we thank him for all of his work and dedication.
Yes, Ms. Vado.
Yeah, I, I'm glad you brought that up. I wanted to say something also. Um, I did work with Dr. Sarasola way back in the day. Um, he, he really was a person who was pro-education in every way, shape, and form. Uh, it turns out, many years later, when I was principal of a Catholic school in New Haven, and found out that he was a student there when he was a kid, um, he, this is a man who, when he finished here, he became, uh, in charge of the Superintendent Association here in Connecticut for many years. I mean, he stayed in education almost to the end. He was very, very involved, and we were very fortunate to have him here, um, for the years that he was here, and, uh, he did contribute a lot to education in the state of Connecticut. I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you, Ms. Vado. Seeing there's nothing else from the board, we just have a couple of announcements. Our next meeting of the Instructional Committee will be on November fourth at six PM via Google Meet. Our next meeting of the Operations Committee will be on November twelfth at six PM via Google Meet, and our next full meeting of the Board of Education will be November twenty-fifth at six thirty PM in the Town Council chambers. With nothing else, I will declare this meeting adjourned.